For the pledge and then we'll have a moment of silence after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with one routine justice for all. And a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the amendment as presented?
I don't know.
That's Mr. Perry.
Am I second?
Are there any additions or deletions?
I don't recall there being any of them. Mr. Curry, could you confirm that, please?
No, there are no... This is not a regular meeting, so the same section of the code doesn't apply. However, all of these items have been on for a number of days.
Thank you very much.
I'll second and prepare to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I have a motion and a second. Unlike other meetings where we vote in unison, since this is an electronic meeting, we will conduct all votes by a roll call vote. If you could signify your vote when your name is called, please. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Mr. Curry, at this time, would it be appropriate for you to discuss for a moment how meetings differ when we conduct them on the electronic platform versus in public?
I'd be happy.
Versus in person?
Sure, I'd be happy to. In general, the board will proceed first, and most importantly, is identify in the prepared agenda materials the meeting is being carried out pursuant to the emergency ordinance that was adopted by the board on April 6th. That emergency ordinance provides for the continuity of government. And because of COVID-19 and it not being appropriate for multiple or several people to occupy the same space, board has conducted the meeting electronically, and citizens are welcome to join electronically. Because attendees or participants can't see who is talking, it's appropriate for each vote to be a roll call vote and for members to announce themselves as they speak. While most of us know each other's voices, that may not be the case for all citizens that are participating.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. That brings us up to the next item on the agenda, item C. Board of Supervisors' Proposed Budget and Tax Rates Introduction. Mr. Curry, it looks like you have some items to tee up for this if you want, please.
Yes, I'm sharing a copy of the presentation that is attached to the agenda, and I will walk through this rather quickly, allowing questions at the chair's discretion from board members. The material is posted to Board Docs, so it is available as a resource in the future if people want to go back and look at it. So this is the Board of Supervisors' Proposed Budget and Public Hearing for the Budget and Tax Rates tonight. And that includes the county budget inclusive of the school budget. And I'm going to mute all lines while I do this so as to avoid background noise. So the agenda for this budget is as shown. I'll talk through the main budget points, the main highlights for this budget, and then I'll walk through each section of the budget. And board members, if you need my attention, please raise your proverbial hand. As boards aware, I presented my proposed budget back in March, and since then, the budget has been modified to account for several items. And so the pathway totally is for the department and agency heads to send their request to me. I prepare a balanced budget. The board reviews that budget through work sessions. We hold this formal public hearing on tax rates and the budget. Then, following this meeting, the board can contemplate the public comments that were provided during public hearing and change the budget, and then finally adopt the FY '21 budget. After today, your next meeting will be on April 27th, next Monday, for a work session to work through any changes the board would like to make, followed by a regular meeting on May 4th, followed by a budget meeting on the 11th and another budget meeting on May 13th. The school budget must be adopted by May 15th unless something changes at the state level. The board can cancel the 11th and 13th meetings if so desired, if they're not deemed necessary. I've walked through most of this during my presentation, but we'll go through it again. The major budget inputs this year included the Classification and Compensation Study, 4.8% increase in our health insurance, a reduction in our VRS rate, which is our pension program, the refuse and operational expenditure reduction for the Page County option, essentially leveled requests from the RCPS originally, and then significant reduction subsequently when the revised General Assembly budget came through, social services and CSA budget reforecast, additional full-time employee in the Sheriff's Office and Dispatch, expansion of your capital pay-as-you-go funds for current critical capital updates, the first half of reassessment costs for our six-year cycle, and then a continued provision of funds for one-time dollars for capital needs such as your buildings. Lastly, there is a fire service fund increase to support the transition to paid EMS. I kept the similar slide as I had in my original budget presentation, but note here, with COVID-19, the $250,000 set aside in the Board contingency for the classification and compensation study has been eliminated. It had... The budget continues to include a health insurance restructuring, including a fixed $1,100 raise for each employee to offset some of those health insurance costs. The reoccurring expenses continue to be aligned with recurring revenue. Funds are tracked. The school budget is as proposed by the superintendent and now the school board includes approximately 4.5% salary increase, 3% plus a step, but requires essentially leveled or actually reduced local transfer. This proposed budget is structured to fund only 3.5%. It does fund 100% of operational budget for the seven fire and rescue companies. However, it does not rely on any increase to the fire levy tax to provide an additional $300,000 contingency within the fire service fund as a starting point for paid EMS. It handles that by providing a transfer from the general fund to the fire service fund. And a large part of this is coming from reductions coming out of the classification and compensation study, so deferring that and shifting those dollars to fire service. Significant changes to the board proposed budget as opposed to the county administrator proposed budget includes a reduction of anticipated revenue from meals and lodging tax, 50% reduction in quarter one, a 25% reduction in quarter two, and then a reduction of the sales tax as well, 50% in quarter one and 25% in quarter two. It defers $118,000 of pay-as-you-go capital expenditures, and as revenue begins to be apparent as we move through FY '21, this and perhaps the classification and compensation study could be put back on the table if revenue proves to be stronger than anticipated. It defers the implementation of the classification and compensation plan as I noted before. The $250,000 included $170,000 for the study implementation as well as $80,000 for the health insurance offset. It now provides $80,000 for the 2% bonus that is contemplated by the General Assembly approved budget. So it's a net reduction of $90,000. As I noted last slide, it reduces the transfer to the schools by approximately $75,000, so that it's a 2% plus step rather than 3% plus step. And then, as I noted, the change from potential increased tax rate for the fire levy tax to a leveled tax and a transfer from the general fund, $228,742, when combined with dollars already expected to be received by the fire service fund leads to $300,000 available for contingent expenditures, including paid EMS. All of that happened before the significant impacts from COVID... From the governor's recent amendments were announced. The governor has released amendments that unallot many sources of increased funding. The reconvene session will start in two days, and the General Assembly will consider those amendments made by the governor. At any rate, the governor has unallotted the state share of the 2% bonus for state responsible local employees, and that was the justification for the Board of Supervisors' Proposed Budget to include a 2% bonus. It unallotted additional funding for Commissioner of Revenue salaries, additional funding for registrar salaries, additional funding for libraries, the share of the 2% raise for the schools, and share of other school funding, which still need to review in detail with the superintendent. As I noted in the slide, we don't completely know what unallot means. I understand generally that for now it's parked on the side until revenue is fully understood. This proposed balanced budget does not incorporate the governor's budget amendments, or it doesn't incorporate changes reflective of the governor's amendment. And that is something the board should consider doing prior to adoption and as the reconvene session works its way through. This is a picture of the overall balanced budget. Each fund balanced among itself and the entire budget balanced. This information, as I said, is available in Board Docs, and citizens can review it at their leisure. And graphically, you can see that this, including transfers, the general fund is approximately 49% of the entire budget, although 8 million of that is being transferred over to the school fund. This is the budget without transfers, and you can see the overall budget over the years between original and amended as we work through '19, '20, and then the FY '21 request as compared to the proposed budget. This slide is a good, quick view of the portion of each of these different agencies that are funded locally versus non-locally. And you can see the bottom part of the bar is local revenue. And for the library bar, I need to note that the local fund includes their use of their library trust dollars for the renovation and expansion project that is just underway with design. So you can see on one end of the spectrum, social services provides... Has about a 30/70 split with local, state, federal, whereas the library is the less than 15% outside revenue from the state. Digging into the entire budget, the general fund is by far the largest fund. And as I note here, this is similar to the slide that I provided in my proposed budget. However, you can see other local revenue is reduced now, and that is reflective of the reduction of the forecast for sales tax and meals and lodging tax. And as I noted before, it does not include any impacts from the unallowed state funds. That's yet to do. And graphically, you can see your general property, basically real estate and personal property tax accounts for over 70% of all revenue coming into the county. Some localities who rely heavily on meals and lodging and B-pole taxes are significantly impacted by a downturn such as this, like a Williamsburg or something like that. And you would see a much greater piece of the pie for the other local, which for us is 7.4%. The general fund expenditure side, as you can see at the top line, this budget does continue to include $80,000 for the 2% bonus, and the state funding portion of that is in the low $20,000 range. Of course, that's only for some of our employees in the 2% bonus and only on the state compensation board salary, not the amount we pay, which each employee has a local supplement, and not all employees receive funding from the state. It does reflect a significant reduction in anticipated expenditures due to the refuse contract. And as I noted before, the RECC authorities request, and rather than providing $47,000 one time, this budget structures in a recurring expense of $12,000 per year. This slide shows you each of the budget functions, which is groupings of departments and how they compare between FY '20 and FY '21. You'll see the general government administration, the bottom bar. It includes county administration and board supervisors and a few others. And it's larger in '21 mostly because of the parking of the $80,000 bonus in FY '21 within the BOs contingency fund rather than placing it into individual departments. And we can talk a little bit more about that as we move on. As I noted, significant changes with the pay matters. The current budget as presented includes the health insurance restructure, which includes approximately $80,000 of investment and transfer from health insurance premium cost share to salary. It eliminates the Baker-Tilly Classification and Compensation Study funding and pushes that off hopefully until... And partially sometime in fiscal '21 if revenue is available. If not, I'll have to push further. And again, as I noted, this budget does not recognize the fact that the governor has proposed to unallot state funding for the bonus. And if that happens, I would suggest that the board... If the funding is not available, the board should remove the bonus from this budget as well. Health insurance, I know there's been a lot of conversation regarding the health insurance, and I know staff and board have a lot of questions. Overall, there's a 4.8% premium increase, and we've seen that the last couple of years, about that amount. Our pool of employees is so small, our local experience rate doesn't really play into our increases. We're rated on the overall pool. And that's good because if we had one or two employees that had very high claims, which if, in the unfortunate case of cancer or something like that, it could drive the plan to gyrate extensively, and it would be burdensome for us. What I recommended is to change the county's share... A portion that the county funds from it being based on the Key Advantage 250 Plan to the Key Advantage 1000 Plan, but then make up for a significant portion of the reduction by paying salary rather than the premium cost. And I know that's very confusing, and I've included a couple memos in the agenda under Agenda Items specifically about this later, so I won't go into it in any more detail here. As noted previously, the position allocation list for the general fund is important, and it helps us keep track of which departments have which positions and ensures that the board is involved in the decision-making processes as we grow the county staff over the years. And this table indicates the changes in red where the sheriff picking up an additional employee and social services actually mid-this year shifting a part-time employee to essentially a full-time employee. They have 12.8, but all positions are benefits earning. The sheriff budget is one of the largest budgets, and unfortunately, the Classification and Compensation Plan implementation was largely geared towards this group to make sure that our officers are properly paid. They are some of the most mobile employees because of the parity in jobs from one locality to another. Once you're a certified law enforcement officer, you can work in most any locality. And so we need to make sure we're properly compensating those employees and all employees. As I did last year, I'm recommending that we take a vacancy credit for this department, recognizing that with the number of employees they have, they do tend to have vacancies through the year. And so salaries do not need to be full employment salaries in the budget. Lastly, this budget still includes two vehicles for the sheriff. And I'm going to breeze through this, but you can see the red bars are actual spending on the left and projected actual spending in '20, and then the proposed budget. So there's been a bit of an increase. This year, they're behind on spending, and I'd have to dig in detail to see why that is. This slide shows with the blue bars the actual employment, and the red line is their full employment. So in the back years, their full employment was 20. We added a school resource officer, so we have one at both schools up to 21. And then in FY '21, adding a communications officer to bump go up to 22 employees. Seeing the divergence of the blue bars from the red line indicates that we can reasonably safely take a vacancy credit in this department. No need to budget for it if it's very unlikely for full employment to happen. And the library fund, I've just noted here that the... You can see PowerPoint doesn't like the word "unalotted", but the increase of funding from about $48,000 to $60,000 in this latest budget, the increase up to 60 was unallotted. And as I'm showing, there's $100,000 from their... Actually, $110,000 from their investment fund being used in this budget, $100,000 of which is being set aside for design of the expansion and renovation services. This budget does not include any pay increases which the library board has requested and were included within the classification and compensation study. Of course, that's no longer in the budget. The school fund, budget's based on ADM of 780. You can see that the school superintendent and the school board are requesting 3% plus a step. The General Assembly included 4% over two years, at least in a 2+2 basis. This budget includes 1% less than what it was requested, which is approximately $75,000. There are many changes that are likely to come through for this budget because of the un allotment of funds and much more to be reviewed and considered in that area. As I noted earlier, the fire service fund, when I presented in March, included a proposed 2 cent increase to the real estate tax rate for the fire levy fund. Rather than do that, this fund now includes $228,472 in a transfer from the general fund. That results in less overall dollars in the fire service fund, but provides for a... And that's very small to see. Overall, $300,000 contingency budget for the fire service fund and includes the apparatus replacement funds, which were debated to some extent last year. Social Services Fund is similar to last year and continues to refine the revenue expectations. It did... It does right now include expected increases from the 2% bonus, which may have to be walked back due to the un allotment. CSA is level with... The proposed budget of 1.3 million is level with what FY '20 was budgeted. However, I'll say that FY '20 will need an increase this year over the next month or so through a supplemental appropriation due to the expenditures there. And the CSA coordinator has moved to a full-time position to help manage our way to lower expenditures in this very large and expensive fund. The debt service fund, you can see I've laid out the debt service payments going forward, and by FY '2026, you will be down to no debt service unless the board takes out more debt for a capital project. Capital fund, as noted, includes the pay-as-you-go capital as well as one-time revenue capital. The Pago budget is proposed at $242,000. That includes $92,000 of funding for the first year of the reassessment. When I spoke to the board, when I proposed my budget, the Next Generation 911 Project was expected to... Originally budgeted to be complete in FY '2020. Delays from the state have pushed that back, and now we expect nearly all of that, probably all of that, to be spent in FY '21. That's a $260,000 budget for the 911 call handling system equipment, of which $210,000 is coming from a grant. The $50,000 delta is from your fund balance. And then, as I noted, last year, the public safety radio improvements to add 800 megahertz transmit-receive sites, that's pushed off a year from what we talked about last year. And the idea is let's implement the system now, which should go live in June or July. And once we see the coverage from that, then the board and community can decide whether it makes sense to make a considerable investment to add transmit sites here in the county to supplement what we were receiving from the towers that are located in Falkir and Cold Peprin. And this table for review at a later time has been updated to reflect the reduction of the Pago, which is all from the schools. When that was done, the schools anticipated receiving a significant infusion of funds from the state for capital, and I'm not sure where that stands relative to the governor's amended budget. So, final thoughts. There's still much work to do to align this budget with what comes out of the state, considering the unallotted funds. And I am recommending that all raises, except for the health insurance offset, be either removed from the budget or moved to the Board contingency budget line and only spent if and when revenue low-line state is shown to be available. And that would include the $80,000 bonus and the 2% plus step for the schools. And I'm not sure the total value of that when you remove the state funding. And then I can bring it back up for any questions the board members have as I get your mics back unmuted. I think all board members are now unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. So I guess the best way to handle this then is let's go around the virtual table, so to speak, and any feedback that each board member may have question-wise in regards to the... Mr. Frazier, did you have any feedback on the presentation this evening?
No, I can withhold any comments I have until after a couple members of the public may speak if they wish.
And we will open two public hearings tonight, one for the budget and one for the tax rate. But I thought the presentation spoke to both, so do that in a combined manner ahead of time.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue, did you have any questions we can answer at this time?
I think I'm going to follow Mr. Fraser's lead and listen to what the citizens have to say and then I may have a few at the end.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson, did you have anything we could address?
I just had a few comments for all of us to think about as we move toward adopting a budget. Obviously with this crisis going on, we have to concern ourselves with a continued flow of local revenue. And Mr. Curry, I think a couple of weeks ago, we had adopted a somewhat conservative projection of reduced meals and lodging and sales tax, reduction of 50% quarter one of the fiscal year and a further continued reduction of 25% in our revenue in the second quarter. And as this public health crisis continues, I just want us all to think about whether we need to be even more conservative in those projections through quarter two and possibly even going into quarter three. And as Mr. Curry pointed out, it is a small share of our overall tax-related revenue stream, but still a significant one. And rough numbers, I'm concerned that would be easily in the first two quarters of, of the fiscal year could, if, if projections are not conservative now, could end up with over $200,000 shortfall, revenue shortfall from combined sales and meals and lodging tax revenue. And I'm, I'm also concerned in light of the fact that at least from where I sit, I will not intend on, this current crisis, when everyone is suffering, support a property tax increase in any form. So I just want us all to be mindful of the fact that we might have to tighten our belts even further on more conservative projections through quarter two and possibly in quarter three on local tax revenue and think about how that affects the bottom line as we move toward budget adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson.
And the one, one last point, I was also concerned of what collection of property tax and real estate property tax and personal property tax might look like as this crisis winds down. And I did talk with our treasurer, Ms. Nick, and we looked at the post 2008 financial crisis period to see what collections look like, real estate, personal property tax, and also the delinquency rate. And somewhat reassuringly, it seems that we held the line on real property and personal property tax revenues. So having talked with her, I'm a little, I'm a little less concerned that we might take a revenue hit there. So really my focus continues to be on how do we make sure that we're not misprojecting a reduction in, in local tax revenue into, into quarter three. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, did you have anything we should address before we move on?
My only question, when I was looking at the revenue for the rescue squads and fire departments, I did not see the revenue for the, the insurance that they, we collect when they make the calls. That's, that's not included here, that's part of the revenue.
Yes, sir. This is Gary. The revenue from the EMS cost recovery shows up in a separate fund for EMS cost recovery and it's basically shown as a revenue of $125,000 and an expense of $125,000 coming in and going out.
Okay. Thank you. I just couldn't find, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. This is Christine Smith and I just wanted to say, I just wish that there was a way and I know it's sort of like trying to hit a moving target at this point, but as the situation clarifies and we move forward to adopt this budget, if there is a way to show a little more equal treatment to the two sides of the house in terms of pay increases, we struggled with this last year and we weren't able to give the same increase to the county employees as to the school employees. And we had decided at that time to do this classification study because we think it is important to have a fair basis for pay. And if there's any way that we can improve that situation as we move forward, I think it is critical that we do so. I know it is challenging and, and there are a lot of pieces in play, but I, I just want that always to be at the forefront because we, we, you know, make some concessions to, to move things forward last year. If there's any way that we can cover that territory this year, I think we should. So that takes us through that part of the agenda. Unless someone has anything to add? That takes us to the next item on the agenda, D1, the public hearing on the tax, I'm sorry, the fiscal year 2021 budget public hearing. Mr. Curry, if you could queue that up for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. As you can see on the screen, hopefully, the public hearing was advertised in the newspaper as required by the Code of Virginia and identified three ways through which citizens could provide comment. Those included emailing the admin at rapahaunekcountyva.gov account, calling the county administration office and speaking to us during business hours or leaving a message after hours. And that comment may be available at this time through electronic means, not wanting to promise that that is capable, never knowing the capability of electronics. I received one email and I would like to read that for the board now and into the record for the public. And then once I'm done, well, actually Supervisor Smith, you should open the public hearing. I will read the email and then you can open the floor to others and ask them to raise their hand through the Zoom platform.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. So with that, I would declare this public hearing open. As Mr. Curry mentioned, he does have a letter to read in for the record. And at that point, if you have something that you would like to say, on the Zoom platform in the upper right-hand corner, there are three dots that you could, that you can pull down from the top of the screen or that will appear in your upper right-hand corner where it says more. And one of your options under the more menu up there is raise your hand. And so if you'd like to be recognized for comment in this public hearing, all you have to do is raise your hand and we will, we will identify you and your mic will go live and you'll be able to participate in the hearing in that matter. And with that, I declare the public hearing open.
Okay, I will read this one letter received to our email address and it's from Jill Jefferson, who writes, "Good afternoon Administrator Curry, Supervisors and Madam Chair of Supervisors. This letter is for your consideration during the current budget season and hopefully can be included in the public comment of your next board meeting. I've copied planning commissioners, except Mary Catherine, as I do not have her email. So the commissioners could also consider addressing this comment during commissioner meeting. First, thank you for all your work ensuring all citizens have county services during this COVID-19 crisis. I appreciate all of your efforts to meet virtually and go to the extra mile to keep services operating during these uncertain times. That said, I wish to go on record to request the county's support to have equity for access to the internet. For those of us in areas where there is no cellular service, this is particularly difficult issue. Landlines in these beautiful remote hollows are copper wires and the lines are often prone to going out in bad weather. Do any of the board members have no cell service and only rely on landlines? If so, please think about how often this happens. It is quite frequent during high winds. This lack of cellular service poses a direct threat in the event of emergency, especially during inclement weather. As a senior citizen, my partner, also a senior, and I worry about the ability to call for emergency services if needed during a storm when landline outages are common. Additionally, in our area on Swindler Hollow Road in the old hollow, we only have limited broadband through satellite. Due to demographic constraints and low population, there are no other internet providers that service our community, only two satellite providers. Our limited internet is insufficient for daily remote telework options." Before this, I'm going to mute one line here. "Before this current crisis, internet was already insufficient. Now the increased internet users during, sorry, now the increased internet users during remote teleworking has brought our internet capacity to a staggering all times low capacity. We've run out of internet by the third week of each month, even though we have purchased the maximum capacity. This poses a significant economic hardship on me. I cannot participate in teen conference, online conference calls as I am unable to drive and cannot go to the new student Wi-Fi hotspots. I am also unable to take online lessons, which is also an economic hardship. As a professional planning and zoning official, I would like to participate in volunteering support of local government citizen advisory group. However, due to lack of internet, I cannot support engage more fully in my own county. It seems the beautiful views shed that are being protected are at risk on the daily well-being of locals in the hollows where no cellular or poor internet exists. The views being superseded translate directly to a lack of emergency services and economic hardships to me and other county locals in rural areas. This is unjust and the equity skewed to favor those with mountain views by providing cellular service and high broadband capacity. I respectfully request you, as our local officials and county minister, to take time to consider the demographics of this county and please reconsider offering equity of services for improved quality of life, including cellular and internet broadband to all constituents. Please consider options such as helping subsidize fiber optics or other internet options for low population areas that are underserved by creating 20 new student Wi-Fi hotspots. You have begun to take measures to address inequity of service. Please take more steps in this direction to bring 24/7 to our homes. Thank you for your time and consideration. And again, thank you for your service to our community. I hope that this, in this coming fiscal year, you will truly address the inequity, the lack of broadband and cellular service in our homes." I previously left, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you. And that finishes, I have one hand raised at this moment from our--
Thank you for Curry. And at this point, if someone would like to participate, as I indicated earlier, please do raise your hand on that Zoom platform on your screen. And when your name is called or your device is identified, please identify yourself by your name and the district in which you reside. And if you keep your time to less than five minutes, we should be all set. Who do we have, Mr. Curry?
We have Anne Klockner. Mic should be unmuted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the executive director at Legal Aid Works Berks. I come to you each budget season to thank you for your prior support and to ask you to continue the support. These are very difficult times. You have to make tough choices about where to cut. And I just want to let you know what we do for the low-income people in your community. We will represent them when they're being illegally evicted or foreclosed upon. We will help them with domestic violence protective orders that they will need. All of those issues are the issues that we know are going to increase in the next few weeks and months. More people will become eligible for our services because of their loss of their jobs. I would just like to respectfully request that any amount you can give us will be important. We want to fight for the rights of your low-income residents in Rapahaunek County. We've been doing that since 1980 and we would love to be a part of the solution. When you're coming up with what your constituents need from you, one of those things will be good solid information on their rights. Please go to our website at legalaidworks.org, click on the resource tab, and you can download lots of really valuable information and know your rights fact sheets so that people won't be taken advantage of, so their stimulus checks won't be taken by creditors and they'll be able to support themselves and their families.
Thank you, Ms. Klockner. We'll look forward to seeing you in person one day soon and appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, I have one. Teresa, just unmuted your mic.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Gary. This is Teresa Wood, Businesses of Rapahaunek. Can you hear me, Christine?
Yes, thank you. You're all set.
Great, wonderful, just making sure. I'm speaking on behalf of Businesses of Rapahaunek this evening. I live in the Hampton District. And I just want to ask the board to, when looking at the budget, I know there are tough decisions to be made, but in the light, the situation we find ourselves in with COVID right now and the pandemic and the harms caused our small businesses, my request is that the budget line, I know for tourism, that we not lose any dollars from there. Those dollars are going to be very important to our small businesses going forward after this pandemic. And we intend to put those dollars to good use to support every small business in Rapahaunek and try and get them all back up on their feet. Ultimately, that results in dollars, tax dollars to the county. So we would, we would request that you keep that amount the same. So thank you very much for your time. Really appreciate it. Thank you for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you very much, Teresa. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
We have Paige's iPhone is unmuted.
Okay. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Paige Blaney, Jackson District. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
You're all set.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding the 2021 budget. The proposed budget still includes a raise in the county attorney's salary. Mr. Goff requested this, his county attorney's salary be raised 22% and he wants litigation removed from his county attorney duties. During the project, budget process, it was revealed the treasurer and the commissioner were not getting timely legal advice from Mr. Goff as the county attorney. Additionally, there have been occasions when even the board did not get timely legal advice from Mr. Goff. Mr. Goff did not even attend this month's regular BOS meeting. Mr. Goff does not have a contract that specifies his duties, the board's expectations and his performance standards. Just a resolution makes EM the county attorney. He is not held accountable for his performance. To date, this board refused to remove that raise from the budget. Note, Mr. Goff is the only county attorney slated to get a raise in the 2021 budget. Bottom line, our golf has provided bad legal advice, costing the county a significant amount of money. He is not performing his duties. He wants his duties decreased and he wants a significant raise. Mr. Goff's total compensation, including Commonwealth attorney, is $190,215 plus $60,118 benefits. That makes him the highest compensated employee and he doesn't even work a full week. As a matter of fact, you add in the county attorney and you subtract what comes from the state, there's over $140,000 of compensation that he gets, which includes benefits. Still, the county portion is more than any other employee. Meanwhile, the citizens that pay that compensation are losing their jobs. I find it disturbing that Mr. Goff's requested raise even made it this far through the budget process. It is well past time for a new county attorney. And no, Mr. Parrish, the judge did not prohibit the board from hiring a new county attorney. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blaney. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, we have John Mills, school board member. I've unmuted your mic.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mills.
No, it didn't hold on. Maybe?
Did you hear me okay?
Yeah, a little mic.
Hey, can, can you let Shannon go first, please?
Of course.
Thanks.
And Shannon is next in line. I'll unmute Shannon Grimsley. Your line should be unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. You're all set.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you all so very much for your service in this important and critical time. I really do appreciate it and managing these competing priorities with such care as you have. And Mr. Curry, I really appreciate your expertise in all of this as well as we navigate these new waters together. I did want to bring a little bit of clarity to the governor's un allotted funds for the school system. The amount that was un allotted for the school system is $72,000 and it is part of the compensation supplement. Our Virginia preschool initiative funding is safe and so is the infrastructure and operations funding, which is a great benefit as well. However, I do want to point out that in our budget that we did construct, we, we were able to reduce the county transfer to us by $95,000 and we were prepared to make some additional adjustments. However, I do want to point out that in our budget that we did construct, we were able to reduce the county transfer to us by $95,000, and we were prepared to make some additional adjustments as well to accommodate the $75,000 that the board of supervisors had called for in this proposal. However, with the unalotted funds, I do agree with Mr. Curry's assessment that we treat unalotted funds as though they were not going to be there. So we are considering that a loss as well. So we're coming in looking for another $150,000 already if this budget is passed this way. Just a food for thought there. I do want to take this moment also to advocate and recognize and acknowledge the incredible work the school staff has done in the midst of this crisis. I just could not be more proud of my colleagues in the field. We've served over 1,000 meals every week since the closures began. We were one of the first school systems that were able to meet that need. We were able to give out over 400 devices last week to students in need who needed devices and continue a continuity of instruction learning plan. Teachers are working extremely hard and contacting every single one of their families. So they, part of the board's priorities and my own is to acknowledge that as well. And even though some of these funds have been unalotted, the goal of the General Assembly, the State Department, and the governor is still to increase salaries 4% over the course of two years. Granted, that has a lot of variables in play right now, but if the goal is still there and that mandate comes through later, when right now we have firmer inputs that we do understand a little better, we have a better shot at getting toward that mandate, whereas later on, when the waters could be a lot rougher and we have other increases to deal with, we may have quite a bit of issue getting there. Finally, I would like to say too that we have saved the county over $1 million in the past four years in health insurance costs with our Commit to Be Fit program and our focus on staff wellness. Health and wellness is very important. We are very proud of that program. We continually look at the sustainability and long-term employer contribution rates, and we have consulted with Pierce Group Benefits right now in a study for sustainability for incentivizing higher deductible plans and hopefully incorporating an HSA with those. So that will be coming, so we're looking at everything as well. But overall, we're pleased with this budget, and we are very sensitive to the fact that everybody, you know, really does need to take a close look at everything. And we are here to support the community the best we can, and we will do our part as well. I just wanted everybody to understand those numbers as well. And thank you again for your service in this difficult time.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. I guess that takes us back to Mr. Mills.
Yes. I'm muting Mr. Mills.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You're all set.
Great, thanks for not forgetting.
Thank you.
I do, I do want to offer my thanks to the board supervisors and Mr. Curry for the work that you're doing on, I realize it's complex. The school is ready to make adjustments based on the COVID response that we know is facing you. We are hopeful that additional cuts in the 2021 school budget will not be needed. The shutdown has had a great impact on revenues, and it's also an impact on our students as well. Next school year is going to have its own difficulties for them, and our system will need to do its very best to recover for their sakes. So tonight, my request is that you please preserve whatever you can, and you have our promise that we will do our absolute best, which is what we're given. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
We have Beth's iPad unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Beth, you should be live now.
Yes, this is John Capielli.
Hi, John.
My, my question is in regards to the hotel tax. Will there actually be any hotel tax as the county has asked all of the hotels, B&Bs, Airbnbs, all of that category, and all of the restaurants to actually be closed other than, and some have exceeded that and closed completely due to safety because of the COVID-18. That's it.
Mr. Capielli, could you remind me, I believe you live in Hampton District, but I wanted to note that as well, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, I do. I'm sorry. I'm in Hampton, with Mr. Whitson.
Very good. Thank you so much. I just wanted to note that for the record, too.
All right.
Mr. Curry, do we have any other hands raised?
No other hands raised at this time.
All right. We're in the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, please do use the Zoom platform where the three dots are up in the upper right-hand corner, and it says more. There's an option to raise your hand if you'd like to say something. You may use that option and be identified by the county administrator and participate that way. So this is your, this is your chance to participate if you'd like to say something.
I have no, no hands showing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. And with that, I would declare this public hearing closed. That takes us on to the CY 2020 tax rate public hearing. Mr. Curry, if you could introduce that for us, please.
Yes, the Code of Virginia requires the board supervisors to hold a public hearing for the budget and also for the tax rates if there's any contemplation to increase the tax rate. The advertisement that was in the paper indicated a tax rate increase potential of 2 cents on the fire levy. However, the budget is currently balanced with no tax rate increase needed. Nonetheless, because it was advertised, this public hearing is required, and I have received no emails and no telephone calls in my office regarding this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I guess, I apologize, I probably shouldn't have gone around and seen if any of the board members had any comments in the last public hearing, but I was sort of thinking these two topics feed into each other, and unless any of the board members have an objection, I'd like us to come back for discussion at the end of this public hearing.
I'm not seeing any hands raised. Several of the board members are muted at this time.
Okay. If any board members have an objection, please raise your hand.
No, no hands raised.
Great, thank you, Mr. Curry. It sounds like we're all okay with that, and I appreciate, I appreciate us going about it this way. I think it, since they do feed into each other, it makes sense to have one discussion at the end. With that, I would declare this public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak? Again, the same rules apply that we just followed from the budget public hearing. Raise your hand, and you'll be identified by the county administrator, and then you'll be identified by me as well, the chair, and we can proceed to have public comment if we have the platform we have available. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
I'm showing no hands raised.
All right. Going once, going twice. And with that, I would declare this public hearing closed. All right, if we could bring all the board members back online then, Mr. Curry? Thank you.
All board members are muted.
Thank you very much. And I guess this would be a suitable time for general discussion for both these topics. And I generally put Mr. Frazier on the spot first, but I think I'll ask Mr. Parrish if you have anything to add on these topics.
No, other than the fact that I'm relatively lucky that the majority of our revenue is unaffected by pandemic because of its property tax. Also, I guess in a way, we're lucky to have a slow, a very low student population so that all the students can be contacted personally by the teachers, and that's kind of reassuring. So, but I really don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Whitson?
Just, I just want to follow up on Ms. Clarkner's short presentation and ask Mr. Curry, I know that the budget line item for legal aid is just a little over $2,000. Is that, is that consistent with what we've spent prior to my position on the board on this type of community service?
Yes, Legal Aid Works has a population, I believe, population-based formula for all the localities that they represent, and the funding in the budget is as they requested.
Great, thank you. And finally, since Mr. Capielli is one of my constituents, I just wanted to thank him for speaking up, and he does raise a good question, which is my own concern, and I would only, only say to him that fortunately fiscal year begins in July, so our downward projections of meals and lodging tax and related sales tax revenue relate to those, relate to the quarters beginning in July, and hopefully we'll bring some businesses back online by then, but I appreciate, I appreciate his statement in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue?
Yes, thank you very much. I just, first of all, want to say for my first year looking at the budget, I have to thank Mr. Curry for all of the hours that he puts into this budget, working with his team, and Debbie Minnick was just wonderful going through the items that he thought I should really be focusing on, and I just appreciate that time. Dr. Grimsley, the same available for give and take on information, just so I would be prepared as much as I can be, because, boy, this budget is something I've never dealt with before. I am happy about the unalotted, governor's unalotted raises going into a contingency budget line. That makes very big sense, fiscal responsibility for us, and if he makes them allotted, we will be prepared to deal with that at that time. I wanted to thank the schools in general for dealing with the situation. This virus obviously has turned their world upside down, but the work that they're doing to feed the school students and the hotspots that we had to put in place, they did a lot of work on all of that, and I just want to thank them for continuing that. The comment by Ms. Jefferson is definitely one that I hear loud and clear from the broadband committee's standpoint, and I can say that having to put hotspots around this county, I think has put a spotlight on our need for connectivity throughout that's brighter than anyone that we've had on us in the past, and hopefully there's some light at the end of the tunnel coming with potential work that Rappahannock County is doing, but that's too soon to tell. And I definitely am concerned about meals and lodging. It's not the biggest number in the world, but when you think of the friends and the citizens that have businesses in this county, that you don't know that they're going to make it through this. If we don't, if tourism wasn't at a good season in October, I expect we're going to see businesses closing. It's just too big of a month for anybody in the tourism business financially, and I do hope that we will continue to try and support our businesses as much as possible, even though the revenue isn't the largest number in our budget item. And finally, I think the Fire Services EMS are working hard to take care of us, and I really appreciate that they are happy, it seems, appears to be, with the budget the way it is. I think Mr. Curry did a great job, just what we have to offer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier?
Am I unmuted? It looks like I am.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have to agree with Mr. Whitson. I can't fathom the idea of voting for a tax increase, and I don't want to be pointing fingers at my fellow board members, but I don't think that we should be saying that we're lucky that most of our revenue comes from real estate. We don't know that the taxpayer is even going to be able to foot their tax bill. So, I mean, we have no idea what's going to happen between now and September 5th. It's all projections and hopes, and I think we need to realize that we need to tighten the belt. And with that, I'm back to the same problem that I brought up at every one of our budget meetings so far, is the fact of that one employee that has a raise in this budget. And to say that, we got an email today talking about, you know, insurance and how it would, you know, protect the county, I guess, in any type of litigation, but if we don't have someone to litigate on our behalf, we cannot enforce our zoning laws. And I don't know why we've gotten this far into this budget with the financial situation the way it is, and we're talking about businesses that may not make it, and then we're talking about giving someone a raise, and obviously, you can't even talk about personnel performance because that should be in a closed meeting setting. And, I mean, it's just mind-boggling that we've gotten this far. We have to have someone that's going to do litigation on behalf of the county. Or we don't have a zoning laws. It's that simple. So I, I don't know. I think if we're going, we're talking about tightening the belt, that needs to be everybody that's involved, or we may have to just, you know, look in another direction for, for county legal price. But that's, I mean, that's about all I have right now on that. I'm not in favor of tax increase, and I'm not in favor of, of the budget that they proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
And I would like to add to that, I feel.
Sure.
I think if we're going to go any further on this, I think the other members need to speak out and say why they're either for or against this one particular increase in the belt. For us, if we just simply ignore it and nobody says anything, is, is just, it's irresponsible.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you.
I just have a few thoughts, and first of all, I want to just thank Mr. Mills and Dr. Grimsley for joining us this evening. I know this is a very challenging time for all of us as we move through the day-to-day operations with the pandemic, and so looking, trying to look ahead, as we were discussing earlier, with unalotted funds, it is trying to hit a moving target and just project as best we can, and it is challenging, to say the least. And in spite of how challenging it is and how discouraging it may be, it is always heartening to know at the end of the day that you have such wonderful peers to work with on the school board and the school administration. And I just can't, and nice things about everyone over there, and I know regardless of how dark things they look, working together, we will come up with a good solution. And I thank them for their participation this evening. I wanted to thank Teresa Wood for calling in for Businesses of Rappahannock. Um, I wanted to thank Teresa Glut for calling in for businesses of Rep. Hanick and also for, um, for her continued leadership of that organization. As we've navigated this pandemic, she has been forefront, offering options to folks in really hard times. And also just navigating basic issues for businesses, um, that they have to implement and, and taking a really humble approach. And I, I do very much appreciate everything that organization has done. Um, I did want to mention, uh, in regards to the letter that Mr. Curry read into, um, the record, uh, Ms. Jefferson resides in my district. And I did not have any correspondence from her regarding, uh, the subject of connectivity equity, for lack of a better term. Um, I did reach back to her to discuss this idea. Um, and I have not heard once from her at this point, but I certainly will continue to do so and report back, uh, should I hear anything. Uh, Mr. Curry, uh, if you could have refreshed my memory, please. Um, I don't remember, and I, look, I didn't see that we have any funding for the broadband committee built into the budget this year. Is that correct?
Uh, no, I believe, and I'll double check right now, is the, the same 5,000 built in, um, as has been built in in the past couple of years. It's limited funding, um, although I think at your next meeting, you'll discuss, uh, the recent, um, request for, uh, response from Rep. Hanicklet Cooperative.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And I know, um, we've done it the last few years, the 5,000, and it seems to be enough to do some studies and things, um, that they have needed to have done. Um, and the broadband committee is in a formative, um, place right now and, uh, a crossroads in, in their development. And I, I would expect that we will see increases, um, possibly in their budget in the years, probably next year. But, um, I think this year would be too early to allocate funds because the actions aren't clear that they need to take at this point. Um, and we didn't receive a request for a budget increase, um, from the broadband committee, so we wouldn't have allocated additional funds. Um, and so those are my, uh, discussion, um,
Supervisor.
For the public hearing for the budget and the public hearing on the tax rate.
Supervisor Whitson has his hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Whitson?
Uh, thank you, Chair Smith. Um, Mr. Frazier, uh, I appreciate everything you said. And you and I are in agreement fully, uh, actually two fronts. One, neither one of us will support a tax increase. And for that, I'm grateful to have his support. Um, and second, I also will not support any pay increases for any county employees, particularly in the health crisis, in the midst of the health crisis world we are all enduring. But to answer Mr. Frazier's question, so everyone on the board is aware why have I been silent regarding the request of pay increase for the county attorney? It's because, um, this discussion we've been having over the last month on budget should be a budget discussion. And when a budget discussion is conflated with questions of personnel performance, it's difficult for me, um, to engage in a rational discussion about a $10,000 line item and a $26 million budget and not believe that it's been conflated for a purpose. So with that, I want to be clear, I do not support, will not support any pay increases in this budget cycle because of the crisis we're in. And any question about any town, any company employee's performance should be dealt with separately and apart from a budget discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Curry, that did, that does remind me, when we walked through the, um, the powerpoint from your, uh, presentation, I believe it, it indicated you didn't support or you don't think we will be supporting any increases, um, on the county side? Is that correct?
What the, what the presented budget shows right now is a 2% bonus for all employees. Uh, based on the presumption at the time it was prepared that the state would be providing their share of that 2% bonus, which is now in question and, um, which is why it should be either set to contingency or removed in entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Uh, do any of the other board members have anything to add?
Uh, yes, I can add. I, I can, uh, I, I still haven't figured out how to raise my hand here, but, uh, I could add something.
Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Parrish, your mic is live.
Okay, uh, now, in response to Mr. Frazier's, uh, inquiry about the silence on the county attorney, uh, as I understand it, uh, he's requesting a, a salary to go from $45,000 to $55,000. And, uh, so, uh, in terms of replacing him, you know, I questioned if we would find a, an attorney to work for $55,000 and also by the same token have an office and a secretary in the health insurance at no extra cost to the county. And so I just wanted to plug that in as part of the thought process. I said.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
Mr. Frazier?
Does anyone else have anything additional to add?
Yes, Mr. Frazier is the same, Chris.
Yes, Mr. Frazier?
Uh, am I still on?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, and, and answer to, uh, Mr. Parrish's comment there, he and I are still on, we're still on the board and going through the process of hiring a, a county attorney. And right now, we are paying way more money between Mr. Golf and backup attorneys when Mr. Golf can't make it or, and, and we also sometimes don't have anybody available when we have meetings. We're paying way more than the contractor that, uh, right now is serving, uh, Orange County and, and, and gave us a, uh, an estimate. So, you know, it's not a very good argument. It's, it, it has full of, it's full of holes. We're paying more money now. That, that, that budget category of county attorney right now in our budget shows, uh, proposal to go into $119,000. And we were told by the contractor that's currently serving Orange that he could do it for $60,000 to $70,000, depending on how often he had to be in the county. And right now, we see in this budget where the county, uh, the, the, uh, two constitutional officers, the county treasurer and county commissioner revenue had asked for funding so that they could get legal advice because Mr. Luke has been, not, I mean, Mr. Golf or we have not been available or they felt had conflicts. So it's, it's, it's not an argument at all. But, but, but we only tell part of the story when we, when we have these discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I would just, I would just say that I, and I think I've said this the last two meetings that we've had. And I, I think Mr. Curry's aware of how I feel on this as well when he makes any adjustments going forward on the budget. Um, I just feel like last year, we as a board reached a consensus, and I know this is a different board, but I still think it's a, it's a, I still think it's a good idea. It was a good idea, then it's a good idea now. At, uh, we paid for the VaporTilly Personnel Study. And when we make adjustments, we should do it based on that study and we should do it across the board. Um, I think that's, that's the, the fair way that we decided to move forward. And I think it's the fair way we should move forward. And, um, and I think that's enough said on that topic. Um, if anyone else has anything else to say, um, please do, let's have this discussion now so that, uh, staff will have some clarity as to how to move forward. All right, it sounds like no one had additional comments. Uh, Mr. Curry, could you walk us through the FY 2021 budget meeting schedule reminder, please? That's agenda item F.
Yes, I'll just pull this up quickly. Uh, we're here on April 20th for the public hearing. Uh, you have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. Uh, again, it'll be electronic to discuss and shape the budget based on what we have learned since the board's budget was pulled together. You'll have your regular meeting on, uh, May 4th. And at that time, that can include, uh, a budget, um, a discussion item to further shape the budget. There's a, a budget work session on May 11th, uh, already scheduled and noticed, and May 13th scheduled and noticed. Uh, May 15th is the date before which you must adopt the school board budget. The last two years, you've adopted both the county budget and the school board budget before that date. Uh, and then, um, you can, uh, adopt the tax rates at the same time you adopt the budget. And discussions with the commissioner revenue and treasurer, uh, they are okay with the board adopting the tax rates as early as you adopt the budget. That'll start the, the clock on, uh, when the, the land book needs to be prepared and presented to the treasurer and when the tax bills go out. Um, the earlier the budget's adopted, the earlier tax bills go out. But the longer period will be available, uh, for the deadline for citizens to pay.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. That takes us to the next agenda item, uh, Budget Matters. The first item under Budget Matters is item G1, Discussion Decision Regarding Health Insurance Plan Offering. I'm sorry to put you on the spot again, Mr. Curry.
Uh, that's okay. Um, as I noted during the presentation, my proposed budget included a change in the, um, the cost share breakdown that the county provides and pays health insurance premiums for employees. Most employer, employers do provide some portion of the health insurance premiums for their employees. Here in Rep. Hanick County, over the last several years that I'm aware of, the county has provided 100% of, uh, the employee-only health insurance premium. And then the only cost for employees was the point-of-service cost when they went to the doctor or filled a prescription with a copay. Uh, in fiscal year of 2018, which is the year before, um, the, the budget year before I, uh, came on the scene, uh, the Board of Supervisors provided the full payment for employee-only and then a $200, um, contribution towards dependent coverage for, uh, any dependents that an employee may have, whether it be a spouse, a child, or an entire family. Uh, in FY 2019, uh, I came to the board and suggested that the board, um, richen that, uh, program and provide additional funding for, uh, family coverage, providing $200, uh, $300 for the first dependent that signs on, and then an additional $200 for a family coverage, making the contribution from the county $500 plus that amount that was provided for employee-only coverage. And then last year, in, uh, this current fiscal year, FY 20, the amount provided for dependent coverage, the 300 and 200 was increased, uh, the amount to share evenly the increase from our health insurance provider. Uh, so rather than being 300 and 200, it increased to, um, I believe, 312 and 520. Um, the total cost increasing more than that. Uh, reviewing those, uh, those proposals and, uh, the, the program that was accepted by the board in those years, as I was going into this budget cycle, the cost for employee-only and dependent coverage was escalating quickly and compounding annually at 4% or 5%, which, uh, if you compound expenses that are quite high at 5%, they quickly, uh, get out of hand and, um, become a, a, a major cost in, in the budget. Uh, in, at the same time doing that, I reflected on my original proposal in FY 2019 to provide $300 towards, uh, the first dependent and $200 for the subsequent dependents and thought that a more fair, uh, application would be to simply provide a fixed percentage of any dependent coverage. So 100% of the employee cost for insurance and then a fixed percentage for dependent coverage. Our proposals from the Local Choice, which is a statewide, uh, pooled, uh, health insurance program available to local governments and schools, same program that this, our schools use, only they're larger and have their own risk pool, um, provide several options for health insurance programs, uh, or plans. And they range from, uh, very, very low deductible programs, including the Key, uh, Key Advantage Plan, which, uh, we had in 2018 and earlier. And then a, a Key Advantage, or that's expanded, Key Advantage 250. And the 250 means it's a $250 deductible for employee-only and it doubles for family coverage. Uh, and a KA 500, KA 1,000. And then there are, uh, even, uh, higher deductible plans available. Um, one of the big changes that I suggested in 2019 was to separate the two plans that the county offers. Our, a county our size is only eligible to offer two plans and therefore recommended that the board offer the KA 250, $250 deductible plan, as well as the KA 1,000, $1,000 deductible plan. And that provides significant choice for employees. They can choose, uh, a plan such as the KA 1,000 that has a low premium, but then a potential for high out-of-pocket costs. I'm going to open a memo here that has a table that maybe people can see, um, that shows some of the costs for, uh, these premiums. And you can say, see from the KA 250 versus KA 1,000, these are the overall premiums that the county has to pay. Uh, and then the, there's a cost share between the county and the employee. You can see the escalation of costs over time from FY 2019 to FY 2021. We've offered these same plans. So an employee could choose to have a less out-of-pocket cost. And you can see here the breakdown in FY 21 proposed for the total employee, employer, whereas an employee could choose to have a $572 out-of-pocket cost versus 820. And, and, uh, those are very high dollar amounts on a monthly basis. And it just shows, when you look at the overall cost, just how expensive these plans are on a monthly basis and the amount that the county is providing on a monthly basis, uh, for these plans. So going into 19 and 20, the Board of Supervisors provided 100% of the coverage for, uh, the KA 250 plan. And, um, which you can see here, uh, provided, meaning the employee had no out-of-pocket cost whatsoever for the KA 250 plan in 19 and 20. It's my goal this year to change the basis on how the Board of Supervisors calculates the portion of the overall plan that the, the board will, uh, pay for to be based on the KA 1,000 plan rather than the KA 250 plan. The KA 1,000 plan has significantly lower premiums and you can see $674 for employee alone versus 766. Uh, knowing that this is a reduction in benefits for employees, uh, 766 per month to 674 per month, at the same time doing this, I recommend to the board and in my proposed budget that the board provide the equivalent of that as a salary increase fixed to employees, not a percentage, but that $92 a month to employees in the paycheck. And then employees could use that to, uh, pay the higher premium for the KA 250 or they could put it in their bank and use it to pay for point-of-service if they think they are going to need it. Somebody who never had to go to the doctor all year long, but then end up with $1,100, somebody who had to go to the doctor a whole lot, uh, may be, uh, well, uh, served by selecting the, uh, lower deductible plan. Uh, in the mix with that, and has made it somewhat confusing, is that the, as I noted, in 2019 and 2020, the cost share for the employee plus one was $300 as escalated due to inflation, and then $200 for the family. And rather than doing that, uh, in this proposed budget, it changed to, uh, being the total premium that it costs, the county for employee plus one, uh, which less the amount for the employee only derives the amount that is extra for that, uh, dependent. So, uh, this proposal suggests that the county would pay half of that dependent coverage. And interestingly, when these numbers break down, you see that the difference between employee only and adding one is $573. And then when you add a family. And then when you add a family, it's actually two times $573. It's equivalent on those two steps. And so in the employer coverage, it'd be $674 plus half of the increase for employee plus one. And for family, it'd be $674 plus half of the $1,146. This served to right-size the contribution to employees so that every dependent is covered 50%. However, the inequity provided over the last two years leads to some, an increase for people who choose employee plus one and then next to no increase for people who choose employee plus family. And that's because of how those plans were shared in the past. Now that they're all set at 50%, you can see that there are some increases and they're shown out here and here of what that is. This table actually incorporates the extra $1,100 of pay for a full-time employee. I know there's been a lot of interest from employees. Many of them do not like this proposal. It's my goal to make the proportion paid by the county fair for the dependents that are just one extra in family. There are any number of solutions the board could choose to use to soften the blow. But for anybody who is insured by employee, by themselves, this proposal essentially has no impact on them. They would continue to have no cost of health insurance whether they take the KA 250 or the KA 1,000. Anybody who uses the employee plus family, this plan essentially has no impact on them as it increases their premium $2. Where this really, or $5, where it really impacts people is that for employee plus one, because of the restructuring of 50%, those employees that had that could see a $55 a month increase if they choose KA 250 and a $49 increase over last year for a KA 1,000. I've spoken far too much and hopefully you have a general idea of the complexity of this. As I noted, there are many different ways this can be done and I can calculate it any number of ways. But we are under a clock to inform the insurer what plans we will offer during open enrollment and what that cost share will be. And so I do need direction from the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Eric. Can I ask, did you look at calculating how it was done last year? And what's the dollar difference there versus how it's calculated this year?
Sort of. Last year, it provided $312 annually for the employee only and then $520 for employee plus family. And the way that those additional amounts over $300 and $500 were derived was based on the increase in total plan. So if the board wanted to keep increases limited to what they would have already been, sharing half of the increase for dependent coverage with employees, we can do that. It would cost, I believe, more than this current plan provides. And if you wanted to do it in a way that had equity and the same sharing percentage for employee plus one and employee plus family, I believe I calculated that to be around $25,000 increase.
Okay.
To the budget.
So if we were to approach this the way we did last year, it would cost an additional $25,000?
I need to go back and double-check that math, but it would be close to that, yes.
Very good. I did want to hear from the other board members on this. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it from the constitutional officers and employees. Mr. Frazier?
Oh, boy. I still don't have my arms around this thing yet. Even after all that, I don't want to ask them to go through that again, but I guess maybe I really need to sit down and learn one with this thing. But it appears that I have the fundamentals of it, but I just don't know exactly how it's going to benefit the county employees as much as, I guess, the overall budget.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I'm, this insurance in general is a crazy, complicated mess. I leave dealing with it personally, and I have to do it with the tavern. The plan we have is a very strong plan. It's very similar to what we do carry at the tavern. And because of it, there are a lot of my employees that can't afford it. So the fact that we have a plan that, although it's not necessarily happy, the staff's not necessarily happy with it, the fact that they can afford it and get the benefits of this plan, I'm proud that we can do that. I did hear from multiple people that they are concerned, one, with how they found out about the change, which I've discussed with Mr. Curry. It probably could have been a little bit better if we'd have had more time. And I think the virus probably took away part of that time. And I am sorry that we couldn't handle it a little bit user-friendly. I think if we can figure out ways to add a little bit more of the budget to this, that will be appreciated by everybody I spoke to. Although I think the $1,100 for the time employee, they do a lot of that, if I'm understanding this correctly. The other part that I'm not sure we're good at, because I'm new to the county as a supervisor, is do we educate the staff on all of the benefits that come along with the plan that's a very strong plan, which telehealth these days, you can get online and it costs you, in some cases, no deductible, and you get the same results. Yearly exams are typically free. So somebody that's healthy, the more expensive or the less expensive, higher deductible may be the best route to go. Using emergency rooms versus urgent care, there's definitely a different free or deductible, yeah, deductible when you go in. And then the pencil envision that I think Mr. Curry grabbed me is part of this, is not part of this, I'm not sure. It says it's a very strong health insurance plan. But I do understand even, you know, a month can make a difference for a lot of people right now.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Parrish?
Okay. This way this is set up, it still seems to be like a pretty good deal for everybody involved. And across the board, it seems to be probably more fair to everybody because you take the employees that were using their spouse's insurance, they were, seemed to me like they were getting the short end of the stick. And this, in a way, takes care of that a little bit. And it's, you know, it's no way it's going to be 100% completely equal to everybody. But I think this approaches it about as good as we're going to be able to do. That's just the way I see it. I have to, like Mr. Frazier, I don't understand every single aspect of it, but that seems to be my impression. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I would just add that I wish we could take a minute and look at what it would, and I know this isn't going to happen on the spot tonight, what it would cost to run this plan the way we structured it last year. I know there was a lot of support for the way we structured it last year. I felt like we made a commitment to people that that was the way we were going to approach it. And I think if it's possible to do it, that we should continue to do that. And if there's $25,000 we need to find to do that, then we should probably go back and see if we can't find it somewhere. I have a few ideas about where we could find it. And I'd be willing to go back and look if the board thought that was a good way to move this forward. I guess my question is tonight, in the action item related to this, Mr. Curry, do we need to indicate how we're doing it or just that we're going to use Local Choice again this year?
The Local Choice requires two things of us. And one, we told them a while ago that we didn't expect to change plans, the two plans that were offered, that they would be the same. But they also do request us to tell them the cost breakdown between employee and employer because there is a minimum that you have to meet to use the Local Choice, although we far, far exceed that minimum. And this all stacks up to the date that we have to release open enrollment, which stacks up to being able to get the people's elected selections in time to have them coded in so that we start the next fiscal year with the correct elections for each employee. So it is all time-sensitive.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. With all that being said, do I have any motions as it relates to this item on the agenda this evening?
Chair Smith, this is Kier Woodson, representing the Hampton District. Mr. Curry, could you be more specific about the time constraints we're under here?
The open enrollment period should be 30 days. So you walk back from July 1 in order to get things programmed into payroll system, you need to come back a week and a half at least, and you roll back 30 days from that, and you're in mid-June. And then the Local Choice wants to have things 30 days before that, and we just ran out of time. So middle of April is their preference for having this information. And of course, they'll take it when they get it, and hopefully it'll work out for us.
Madam Chair, I mean, I really contingent on whether or not Mr. Curry can confirm it will cause a problem. From where I sit, I really, I really do need a sufficient opportunity to study this and determine what's best. And I wonder if we might be able to defer our final action until our May meeting or our next budget meeting.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, if Mr. Curry believes that we will still be in compliance with the insurance provider, I think that would be our course of action. You know, we received additional explanation in my rant today, and that's no criticism. Mr. Curry's done a fantastic job and obviously has managed a very complex issue here. But to the extent it is complex, if I could have more time to make an educated, reasoned decision, I sure would appreciate it.
Well, and that, I was just going to say, Deputated Mrs. Christine Smith, largely with the way I feel about this agenda item. I feel like at this time, I think these are good plans. I feel it's appropriate that we can reach back to our provider and let them know that we are interested in pursuing these plans with them again for the coming year. I'm not sure, I'm comfortable with the details on how we've laid out the plans this year to include that information in our commitment. And so my question to you, Mr. Curry, is between now and our next meeting on the 27th, do you think it would be possible, could you go back and look at how it would look if we structured this plan like we did last year?
So I, of course. By that, I assume you mean providing a health insurance, covering health insurance based on the KA 250 plan, not providing any salary increase. The $1,100 would go away because it would be needed to pay for the KA 250 plan. And then setting up the dependent coverage based on the original 300 and 200, but escalated to cover half of the dependent cost.
Correct.
Yes, I can do that. I would like to bring the alternate recommendations that I think provide more flexibility to staff and provide the same dollar amounts for those who want to stay in KA 250.
Okay. I think, I mean, I don't want to keep the other board members, I certainly want everyone to speak, but I think the more cost-benefit analysis we can have on this so that all of us, you know, that are on this board and all the people that are enrolled in the program can know what our options are and take the best path forward. If we can make the commitment on the plans, but punt the details for a week, I think that would be who us all. Board members, how do you feel about this?
Total agreement here around Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Woodson?
Yeah. Well, I, is it, are we still communicating something to the insurance provider? Is that what I understood you to just say? Or maybe we need to say anything right now to them?
Well, we will communicate with them at least ranges and let them know our timetable. And they can tell us the consequences, and I'll report that.
Yeah, I guess on the consequence front, this is Kier Woodson again. I just want to make sure that, do we, can we sit here right now in this meeting and know that there would be no consequences to our, our tax pair?
I think the biggest consequence would be a shortened open enrollment period. And our employees would have to be agile and put pressure on staff. But they would have to be very responsive to get their information back to county administration. And if there are, people want to change plans, it's just more paperwork. So shorter time would be tough.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that. Okay, but I just want to make sure that from a premium perspective, that we wouldn't in any way incur penalties or...
I don't, I can't answer that definitively, but I would...
Something like that. You're just saying that. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I think this is way too important to the staff and we need to make sure we do our best to take care of them and take care of the fiscal responsibility. I did an open enrollment through online, Mr. Curry, this year. I don't know if that's an option.
I was, you know, we've looked into that. The schools is doing that. We have so few employees, the personal touch tends to help get things done and explain, I think, better.
Okay. That makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah. I guess it makes sense to wait another week and make a decision at that point. If there's any more newer information or more understanding about it, that's fine. Like I say, I hope this one seemed to be pretty fair to the most people. But we'll just move forward and see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Curry, do you feel like you have clear way forward this time? Or do you need us to have a vote on this?
No, I guess what you're asking for is for me to bring back additional options to the board next Monday to include structuring it exactly as we have it in FY 20 and sharing the increase for coverage with dependents, basically 50-50.
Yes, please. Thank you very much. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, item G2, Insurance Provider Discussion, Property Liability, Etc.
Yes, I placed this on the agenda not knowing how far into the process I would be able to get for this meeting and knowing that a decision wouldn't be made at this meeting. But beginning to prepare the board for a decision likely at your regular meeting on May 5, this is time-sensitive and essential that we, the board, identify your property, automobile, liability, insurer. As board member... As board members are aware, we have the Virginia Risk Sharing Association now, which is formerly VMLIP. And two years ago, we sought a proposal from Bay Corp., which is really the only other competing entity out there. And at that time, didn't make sense to make any change. We tested the waters again this year with both providers, particularly because there have been some disagreements between the county and Versa on coverage. The county attorney drafted some specific language for non-monetary damage, public official liability claims such as FOIA and COIA, and provided it to Bay Corp. to see if they would accept that language and they did and priced it. I now have several pricing options with various per occurrence and aggregate limits for that type of coverage. And I'll be able to compile that information and get it out to the board this week and have it available for you to review and digest at your meeting next Monday. And then hopefully have the board in a position to select an insurer at your May 4 meeting. I can tell you right now that the cost is essentially the same between insurers and we believe, like 87 other counties in the state, believe Bay Corp. may be, it may be time to change.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I guess I'm wondering, is there any possibility of any savings there or is it, you seem to indicate that it's pretty consistent?
We really drilled into the coverages over the last two years and made sure they were right sized for us as far as our workers' comp coverage to make sure our employees were classified correctly. As far as the Line of Duty Act coverage to make sure the right number of employee and volunteer fire and rescue providers were listed correctly and we were able to trim the premium down two years ago and held it fairly steady, went up a little bit last year. Both programs show an increase going into this coming year. It's within what I assumed in the proposed budget, which I just assumed a 5% increase over FY '20. And so we're within that window with either provider, but I don't see a significant cost savings.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Do any of the board members have any questions about this agenda item?
Well, excuse me, I've got something in my throat here. Yeah, like I said, I got that email earlier, I saw it today and I just mentioned it briefly in the discussion earlier, to say that we won't have someone that will be doing litigation. The insurance companies don't litigate on our behalf. They may defend the board or the county on litigation. So if we don't have anybody that's willing to do litigation, we can't enforce our zoning orders. I just thought I'd put that out there one more time so that even I understand it properly. There will be litigation and we don't have a zoning ordinance.
Yes, sir. The few zoning cases that Ms. Summer sought summons for here recently, Mr. Goff actually brought those charges as the Commonwealth attorney.
I understand it and that there, that is the problem in itself because as Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Goff doesn't work for the board and we have no input in that. And then, and then the problem with it is those were basically decided between him and some sort of a plea agreement and the county's guild is looking at the same zoning violations for four years now.
Yes, and so if the board can, we can litigate civil items, I believe, as you desire. It's my understanding for a county attorney to litigate criminal cases, the Commonwealth attorney must grant that authority. And you can do either way, criminal or civil with zoning matters.
But again, if the county doesn't have an attorney that will litigate on his behalf, then we don't have a zoning ordinance. We're not enforcing them.
There would be a, it would be a cost to hire an attorney to litigate on our behalf in those circumstances.
Exactly, so we're right back to where we were discussing earlier that there's hidden costs by saying that we're using the inexpensive method. The inexpensive method that we supposedly are using is costing us more daily and it was proposed a cost to see them all.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue? Did you have anything to add?
Not really, I look forward to seeing the price breakdown and any other information Mr. Curry can give us.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
No, just wait for more information. Thank you.
Mr. Whitson?
No, hold on. Let me add you, Mr. Whitson.
Thank you. I did have, I did have early in the year, a very long discussion with Mr. Goff about the two policies and have a fairly good understanding of the direction in which we should head. So I have no further comments at this time, having studied it a bit already.
Thank you. I did wonder, Mr. Curry, this is Christine Smith. I did wonder, I know some insurance providers are providing refunds or credits because of non-use, because of COVID-19. Do any of our insurance providers indicate that they're offering that?
Yes, our insurer will be providing a refund and I believe it's, it's either 15 or 25% of our automobile policy. They asked us if they wanted it applied to next year's premium or a check and we asked them to send a check.
Okay, very good. I know it seems like dimes and dimes, but anything we can save as this plays out, you know, may benefit us in other areas and I appreciate your being on top of that. Does anyone have anything to add to this agenda item? The insurance provider discussion.
Well, just after Mr. Whitson made a comment, he did, I don't know that every board member has the same understanding on this particular issue, the insurance and the coverage and what type of process that we should be using with our county attorney. We haven't had, and as you remember, Ms. Smith, it was almost impossible for us to have any type of personnel discussions prior to the first of the year with the previous board. So I don't know that all of us have the same understanding of the process as Mr. Whitson just elaborated on. I don't want to put him on the spot, but I just wonder what exactly we're talking about. Because I haven't had any discussions with the county attorney. It's almost impossible for me to have a discussion with him.
Mr. Whitson, was your comment in regards to how you understand, and I don't mean to put you on the spot either, I'm just trying to refresh my own memory, how you had discussion with the county attorney in terms of our litigation coverage? Is that what you all had to say?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, early, very early, late last year, as I made the rounds and tried to meet with all constitutional officers, this question of litigation coverage came up in casual discussion with Mr. Goff. I mean, I, as a new board member, I certainly thought it important to take upon myself to meet with as many constitutional officers as possible. And so part of my discussion with him related to litigation insurance coverage and what we were getting and who was providing it and if it was sufficient. So in that sense, I got some background on the competing service providers and really, I mean, that's really all I can tell you. I mean, I've got some background in notes, so.
And I guess, I don't need to interrupt you, but I had asked questions before, Mr. Curry. I think you'll remember regarding our levels of coverage for federal cases, if that was adequate. Because I know in the past, before my time on this board, some cases were broad that sort of fell into a gap because they were federal cases. So any kind of information we could have in terms of insurance that that's covered as well would be very helpful.
Yes, I'll be sending out to you probably tomorrow the proposals from the two carriers and provides a general description of the different coverages.
Very good. Thank you. I think we can resolve any other questions about this, the one-on-one discussions. Does anyone have any additions to the insurance provider discussion?
And that might provide we can get some additional information.
No, I obviously better know we've got that additional coverage as well. That takes us to the next agenda item, H1, the COVID-19 update. Mr. Curry, did you have any updates for us on this?
Nothing specifically. The, Mr. Williams did have a conference call with the chiefs tonight, just to brief. I'm not sure if he managed to make it on the call, surprise to Smith. Made it on the first half, but it was from 6:00 to 7:00. Continued to work with them. Mr. Williams is in touch with the health department. We still just have the one confirmed case. That doesn't mean that there isn't other presumptive or test, there are no other tested cases in our community, but there could be presumptive tests or cases that are unknown cases, carrier cases. So everybody should continue to heed the governor's recommendations. That's my advice.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I just wanted to give an update to everyone. I was invited to participate on that OEMS call this evening. For whatever reason, I didn't have any luck joining that meeting. I did communicate with Mr. Williams to see if there were any actions that the board needed to undertake as a result of the meeting or if there were any needs that were not being met at this time that we should address as a board. And he reported that there was no action needed from the board at this time. Or were there any needs that were not being met that we needed to consider? So I apologize, I'm not sure why I wasn't able to join that meeting. But I was not able to log in on the phone and, but I did get a report prior to this meeting and it seems like there's no action needed by this board. We do have tentatively scheduled a public safety committee meeting for next week and may or may not move forward with that meeting if we are able to put together a quorum or anticipate being able to put together a quorum.
So I have a question.
Mr. Parrish?
It's the, you know, the height of the merkle season right now. It's frustration with people not being able to get into the park to look for the mushrooms. But even if we opened up our trailheads, the park is still closed, right? They still not able to go up in the park? Does anybody know?
Well, I would look for Mr. Curry to clarify, but my understanding is the park is closed to vehicular traffic. Is that right, Mr. Curry?
All access, it's closed.
Yeah, the park is closed right now completely and I'm sure if even a citizen who, before it was just the trailheads were closed and of course, there are a lot of ways into the park and out from a trailhead if you happen to live along the edge of the park. But that's different now, the entire park is closed. So I wouldn't suggest that people should be on park traffic right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I mean, it is unfortunate that the park is closed. We did have reports of a lot more folks in the area to begin with the nicer weather. And I did reach back to Kevin Solskaya, who is the new superintendent for the Shenandoah National Park or he's active as superintendent for the Shenandoah National Park and requested that they do some messaging on social media in advance for the weekends just to remind folks that the park is closed. And also anything that they can do, you know, in terms of a presence in the county, particularly on the weekends, that it would be very much appreciated. So he was very receptive to that and indicated that they would pick that up as well.
Okay.
Mr. Whitson, did you have anything to add?
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to thank you, Madam Chair. I know you were out with your husband putting up more signs, just reminding people coming to the county that there's no trail access here currently and I want to thank Mr. Frazier too. I thought his signs looked great and if the wind would cooperate, I know they'll go up again. So that was hard labor and you had a lot of help, I know, but still, thank you for taking on that project. And I know when we, when we had the emergency meeting on that Monday, we thought, we thought that at least closing all trail and access in the lower park boundary within Rapid County would make a difference in terms of traffic in the county. Certainly I've observed in the last week or so, a significant decline, whether it's 80 or 90% of traffic, I don't know, but it seems to approach that. So I do feel good that we, in the community, we're all able to work together to find a practical and simple and virtually no-cost solution to protecting ourselves. So I want to, I thank all my colleagues on the board, Mr. Curry and all the folks up in the Shenandoah National Park. We've been checking with Flim, he's now moved on to the greener pastures for their help in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Ms. Donahue?
I just wanted to say thank you, Madam Chair, for reaching out to the park service when I got the messages on social media with regards to Chester Gap. It was clear that people were back hiking where they could and probably thinking their carton been, but it sounds like there were several up there on Sunday. So I appreciate you reaching out and copying me in on that and hopefully this weekend I'll have a little bit of park service. I think he was talking about having rangers out taking a look at those areas, which is great.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Frazier?
Oh, I don't have anything to add on that. Just as Mr. Whitson mentioned, the wind was very uncooperative for a while. I just have the banners back up every move.
Do you have additional banners that are available if folks need them for kind of hotspots as well?
I do, I think we have, and well, I say that, but I, he wanted me to put the one up there in Chester Gap and one in Flint Hills. So if I can take those two out, I think I have one, three by fives left. I have to check, I do have the two original two. I have the, a four by eight to go up in Chester Gap or somewhere up in Wakefield and then a three by five as well. So I think I only have two three by fives that aren't spoken for.
And I have, I have one of the smaller ones and I have one additional large one that I'm hoping to get out this week. I do think it will be an ongoing situation for as long as this lasts, as long as the park is closed. As long as others nice people will want to get out and get in and I would too. So I'm hoping to get at least one other sign out this week and hopefully put us in a good position so everyone knows what's going on. I did go back and make sure the cones were up in the parking areas up there at Mountain Pass and Buck Hollow yesterday and those are still both very well marked. And there is actually like a VDOT or the park has to put up a lighted sign as you start to climb to the top of the mountain and announces that the park is closed. So there is messaging at the bottom of the mountain, you know, to give people a heads up as to what's going on. To sort of be on a completely different note, I do look forward to a day very soon where we can open up the county and I'm hopeful that we won't have a lot of cases to report and I do hope that we in the county can start to undertake our regular business. I look to Richmond and the governor is certainly moving his agenda forward and there is essential business to do there and we have essential business to do as a county and I'm very concerned with the momentum- And I'm, I'm very concerned with the momentum that we're losing on some of our committees, especially on the planning commission and on the robbing committee. There is a lot of vitality and momentum as we started the year. And the sooner we can get back holding regular meetings and work sessions and doing the people's work, I think the better. And I hope it will be soon. Does anybody have any other questions regarding the COVID-19 update?
Yes, this is Gary. Just for any additional signs that go up, or plan to go up in the VDOT right away, just let me know the location so I can complete the land use permit for VDOT.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And I, I see VDOT very much. They were wonderful in terms of getting cones and barrels and anything that we needed to help with those parking areas. The folks at VDOT and the sheriff's department and the folks at Shandong National Park, it was really great cooperation to get everything really clearly marked. And I just thank everybody involved. Mr. Whitson, did you start to say something?
Yeah, um, no, I'm, I'm going to be a beggar being a chooser. I noticed when I was driving over the Amisville landfill area, that VDOT has one of the message, electronic message boards there in the compound where that bridge maintenance area is, Mr. Frazier. I don't know if that's not being used, but as Ms. Smith said, as the weather gets better, this will be an ongoing problem, where we're going to still have traffic. I just wonder if it would be worth checking with VDOT to see if that sign might be available for our use somewhere on 211, just to reinforce the point that people can access the park.
Yeah, that, that may change on a weekly basis as, as their projects are completed. Yeah, so it may be that we have to bug them on a regular basis so that we can pick one up as it becomes free. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I just think it, I think your signs are great, but I think to have a big one like that, that's flashy, it'll make the point. Mr. Curry, is that something that you want one of us to reach out to, Mr. Nasby, or do you want to do that?
I'm happy to reach out to him.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you. It's a good, good idea.
Very good, okay. So that takes us through item H1 to the refuse update. Mr. Curry, would you like to lead us in this agenda item, please?
Yes, and of course, time is getting a little late. As everybody, board members and likely citizens who may be on are aware, we had a rather abrupt change to our service provider over the last weekend. So Updike has completed their work for the county, and we're now using Page County through the contract agreement that was approved by the board supervisors in Rappahanna County and, and Page County. So far, so good. We didn't have a lot of time to, to stand things up, and so there's a bit of improvisation, improvising in place. And our citizens have been asked to make a drastic change in how they recycle from a co-mingled solution with Updike recently to a source-separated solution. Right now, we are borrowing all the refuse containers from Page County. We're leasing at a very low rate a few containers from Falkir County, we're very grateful for them. Our containers are on order, and when they come in, we'll have much better signage for the program. Compactor should be, order should be placed tomorrow. And so within eight weeks, six to eight weeks, we should be able to transition fully to our new setup, assuming site work can, can happen appropriately. So I know big changes. I'm working on messaging to the community in addition to the release that's attached to the agenda, and having our, our partners in the press help us get the message out to the community on what can and can't be recycled, which containers they can be placed in. I don't want to get too far ahead of that before we have our own containers, because it will change a little bit. But there are a lot of lessons to be learned and habits to break, but we'll get there.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Did any of the board members have any comments on this agenda item, the refuse update?
No, I, I think Mr. Curry's done a great job trying to keep all those balls in the air.
Ms. Donahue, did you have anything to add?
I just want to thank Mr. Curry. I know how crazy it had to have been to make all that happen so quickly. And luckily, people in other counties that are happy to, to help us, because it could have been a much worse mess than it was, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Oh, sorry, it's muted.
I think here's muted, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, please, and.
Mr. Curry, you're tired of hearing from me tonight. No, thank you. I just wanted, actually, I wanted to echo the sentiments of everyone else, and thank you, Mr. Curry, because I, I saw firsthand all the moving parts, and I quickly pulled everything together. And I also want to just express my early confidence in the customer service that we're getting from Page County. This weekend, Flatwood was full up by, by Saturday afternoon, and Jeff Blevins at, at the Dow Creek landfill was able to mobilize containers for us on short notice for Sunday, which then filled up very quickly again. But there was, the level of responsiveness is very much appreciated, and I expressed that to him.
Yeah, and I can say that we were emptied out today.
That's fantastic.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
No further comment. I, I too appreciate all the work Mr. Curry's done. Looking forward to have these things moved out with it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I just want to echo everyone else's comments that, you know, it wasn't a abrupt transition. I, I think it is a successful transition as much as something like that can be. I know that business was brisk yesterday when I stopped by, and I'm glad to hear that everything was cleared out this morning. And I would just say anything we can do to get out information regarding particularly the recycling instruction, and, and clarify that. It, it's going to be difficult to reinforce, especially during this pandemic, and be maybe as hands-on as a transition like this that we might normally want to be. But in visiting the site, I thought everything was clearly marked. It is a change, so it will take some time to get used to, but I think it's very clearly marked, and, and I think folks will be able to get used to it quickly. And it, it gives me assurance that all the recycling is being properly treated, when there's so much care to have it separated on the front end. I did see that there were some comments from people that they would like more instruction as to lids on, lids off, how clean, you know, some fundamental recycling one-on-one stuff. Just, just to make sure that message is clear. That's all I have. If there's no further discussion, that takes us to item H3, the purchase award for public safety radio programming for transition to Harris system.
Yes, thank you. This is an item that normally I would just take care of without board interaction. We already have budget for the overall radio project and to transition to the Harris system. Part of that is to reprogram the Motorola radios that we have that are capable of operating on the Harris system. But because the cost is $10,575, $575, over the limit that the board must approve awards, I'm bringing to you to approve this award. There aren't very many Motorola shops that can do this, and this is Radio Communications of Virginia. And they have a contract through VDOT that we were able to leverage. They had some decent pricing, so we can continue moving on this Harris project. It would be very nice to have it also behind us, which should happen in June or July.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Frazier, did you have any questions or discussion on this item?
No, no, I don't.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
No, I'm, I think it just makes complete sense.
Mr. Whitson?
No, I'm, I'm good, I appreciate it.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board.
I'm on board too. Do, do I have a motion in relation to this agenda item H3, please?
This is Kira Whitson, Hampton District representative. I'll make a motion that we approve the award of work to Radio Communications of Virginia to reprogram county fire and rescue radios, so that they will work on the new Harris radio system.
And sheriff radios. Did you get, there are sheriff radios as well.
Sorry, you broke up there.
I'm sorry, there are sheriff radios as well.
Okay, including sheriff radios.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone. And that takes us to our final agenda item, I1, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, that was Mr. Parrish, please say aye.
Alright, aye.
Aye, also, thank you.
Thank you.